Administration Finance Recreation and Parks Following Safety and Public Works Committee Meeting for May 12, 2020. The purpose of the committee meetings are the city departments to pass along information that the city council and discuss initiatives listed on the published agenda. By ordinance, the committee consists of the mayor, members of the city council, and the city administrator. The ordinance mandates the city administrator as the chair of the committee meetings. By ordinance, the committee makes no formal decisions on committee matters, where other items are going to move to a mayor and council meeting for consideration of vote, or staff receives guidance from the committee regarding a matter. This is a public hearing, but not a public, I'm sorry, this is a public meeting, but not a public hearing, therefore while the meeting is open to the public, do not take public comments or questions during the committee meetings. Public comments or questions are received at the regular city council meetings held at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers on the second and fourth Monday of each month. The first item on today's agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Administration Finance and Recreation and Parks Committee Meeting for March 10, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilmember Tyser. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to administration, number two, consideration for the mayor and the city administrator to award a contract to Midwest Employers Casualty for two years workers' compensation reinsurance coverage with an annual premium of $122,703. Mr. Harner.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Palmer, this item is in consideration for a contract to renew our workers' compensation reinsurance, or otherwise known as stock loss insurance. As you know, the city pays our workers' compensation claims directly, and as such, we maintain a reinsurance or stock loss insurance policy to protect us from just that, large losses. The policy features a $1 million limit for aggregate workers' compensation claims, so the city's liability would be limited to that, as it currently is, and then $600,000 for specific claims. The, our broker for risk management, Arthur Gallagher and Company, solicited quotes for this, and Midwest Employers Casualty Company was the sole respondent. We did hear back informally from some other vendors, specifically Safety National was 25% higher, and the other company that our broker had a conversation with, AIG, was really not interested in issuing new policies. But we recommend that we sign a two-year contract. That will ensure that the city won't face premium increases this time next year. And one other feature, we were notified, many of the carriers for workers' compensation, given our current environment, COVID-19, are dropping the communicable disease coverage. We currently have that, and should we be able to get this approved during the month of May, Midwest agreed to bind that over, so we would have that coverage for the coming year. But that expires June 1st, and as I mentioned, many carriers are not covering that in their upcoming quotes, so that's a nice feature. But that's it. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Joe. Floor's open.
Jim, may have missed it, where does the stock loss pick up on an individual claim?
$600,000.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and move forward by Councilmember Tyser. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, consideration of a resolution for the city of Roswell to continue its participation in the Georgia Urban County Consortium, GUCC. Mr. Alford.
All right, I believe I'm unmuted. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Let's see here, share the screen. Can everybody see my screen? It's not much of a presentation for this, but just for the future CDBG item, is my screen sharing okay? It's good. So this is a resolution to continue our participation in the Georgia Urban County Consortium that is led by Cobb County. What this participation does is it gives us, it gives us the opportunity to receive grants through HUD, the Home Investment Partnership Program Grant, which gives us about $100,000 a year, and it can various types of housing assistance. We're not big enough to receive this grant on our own, so we partner with a consortium, which is led by Cobb County, and to receive these funds, we've been in the consortium since, we ran it from 2012 on to 2014, and we took a couple of years off, but we currently been in it, this current contract, from 2018 to 2020, and this is a resolution to continue that participation for the next three years, through 2021 to 2023. We anticipate getting about $100,000 a year that can go to housing.
Oh, yeah, Charles?
That's all I got.
Floor's open. If anybody has any questions. Is there a motion to move forward?
Oh, it's actually a question, just wanted to make sure I'm 100% clear. So when I read through your materials, which were, I felt very helpful, it looked like it's, it's great upside for a lot of good causes in Roswell, and it looks like there's, there's no downside to the Roswell taxpayer or anything else. Is that accurate?
I'd say so, yes. We generally give the funds to our nonprofit partners, and they run with it.
Right, so yeah, with that, I'd like to motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Flair. Was there a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please. Charles, can you unshare your screen so I can see everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hands. Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item number four, consideration of a resolution to approve the 2020 Community Development Block Grant CDBG allocations and approval of a budget amendment. Mr. Alford.
Yes, sir. Let's see here. I guess this is approval of a resolution to accept our 2020 Annual Action Plan through HUD. What you see on the screen here, make sure you can see it all, is our recommended allocations. Getting rid of this little thing, but we anticipated this year getting $450,000 as an estimate from HUD for our Community Development Block Grant Program. I found out on Friday that we actually got 503,686. That was the official amount, so they increased our award amount. We've got that in official writing right now. So your initial paperwork and the resolution that I submitted probably still shows $450,000, but we were able to increase that, and I've got the revised allocations here. So basically, we get an annual grant through HUD every year through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and we open an application process for city departments as well as local nonprofits to apply for these funds. We opened that process back in February, 11 applications, and totaled around $650,000 worth of requests. We then reviewed those applications for eligibility, and then sent it to a scoring committee who reviewed and scored the applications. I then went through, they sorted this score, or sorted the applications by high score, and fully funded each one until we were out of funds. Basically, everyone was funded except for three projects, East Hills, North Georgia, Norfolk Community Charities, second project, they actually had a, two, two applications, and Zion Missionary Baptist Church was deemed ineligible. And the only application that was partially funded was North Fulton Child Development Association, which is basically where we ran out of funding. And so with your approval, we'd move this resolution forward, and once it's approved, we would submit our Annual Action Plan and be able to start these projects.
But Charles, is it fair to say that everything but for administration requires it to be used for low to moderate income type of projects?
Low to moderate income individuals, or HUD has certain classes that are considered presumed benefit, and that would be seniors that are 62 or older, special needs, adults or children, and battered spouses, things like that. But other than that, it's low to moderate income individuals.
Thank you. Floor's open.
So I guess I have a question that, this is actually for Mr. Skalski. Mr. Skalski, are you on? I saw his, his name's on there.
You know Dan's on, Nancy?
Yes, Dan's on, sorry. Took me a while to find my mic here.
Yeah, same thing happened with me a minute ago. So, Mr. Skalski, I guess what I, what I want to make, what I want to confirm is, so I see you requested $140,000. Does that, does that, does that replace all of the, I forget if it's rusty or just what the, what the health issues are with the, with these current pipes, but does that replace them all in the CD grant locations?
No, this is just for one specific project, which we actually did a portion of a couple of years ago, and this is phase two of, I believe, the Grove Way Replacement Project. So it was a portion that was done in part when a transportation project was going on. The whole project was designed, and this is just completing that particular stretch of galvanized steel replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Skalski. So I guess Mr. Skalski has a follow-up question, because from, from everything I've learned from these, from these pipes, they definitely seem to me a health concern and a real health reason to make sure that we are replacing these. Why, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want to look for other, other additional pipes to replace that, that fit in this, this low, these low-income requirements?
Well, we do do that, and we do have a list. There are some criteria that we have to meet, and part of that is the area, but with water lines, it's very specific to literally the people that'll be served by that water line. So we go through that exercise with Chris Boyd and Charles really every application year, and try to identify the next best lines where it's feasible to go through and do that income assessment criteria that Charles kind of helps us through, to determine if and how much of a line could qualify for CDBG funding.
Right.
It's hard to do it for the city as a whole, it would be difficult to try to do that.
Right, well, and, and the city as a whole, for where, where the Roswell water has these unhealthy pipes, a lot of, a lot of the locations wouldn't even be eligible for this grant. I guess, I guess what I, what's just still not clear to me is, are there any locations that are eligible for this grant that still have the unhealthy pipes that need us to, to pay to replace those in the future?
I believe the answer to that is yes, but it is a small and getting shorter list.
And so I guess, and even, even with that, you know, I think this is, this is always such a challenging process every year, because all of these are so, such great important causes for, for so many, so many different groups that are doing such, such good for the community. It's, it's just as, as I look at, as I look at the ranking and where I put the priority, is it's on, it's on what is the biggest impact to health and, and safety, and, and from everything I've learned about these pipes, you know, we as a city really need to replace them, whether it's from grants, or whether it's from general fund, or however it happens, and, and that's where it's just, if there's, if there's, and you said it sounds like there's some other, other things on the list, I think we should be looking at, is there something else we can knock out this year and make it, make it healthier and safer for those Roswell, low-income Roswell residents that are relying on, on Roswell water?
We can absolutely go through our list and review that with mayor and council, and with Charles in terms of the next logical ones that would be on our priority list, that would meet the criteria.
Now, if I could add to this, you know, over the years, we had, previously had greater area where we could use CDBG money, and as we're gentrifying and as we're, our older neighborhoods are morphing into new mini mansions, those requirements are just, or the opportunities are dwindling. So, and that is year by year, we have less and less area that we can use the CDBG money for the pipes, so I would, I personally think that we should really focus on that, because that's going to be a, a resource that dwindles and goes away.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, that's actually a great point I never even thought of, so I think that, thank you, Mayor. That's, that's a great point. And, and if anything, knowing that these present such a health issue and unfair risk to Roswell residents is something I want to make sure that we're, we're eliminating, you know. With that, Charles, from a timing perspective, knowing that Mr. Skalski mentioned that him and Mr. Boyd can look back to see if there's any other ones that could potentially be, be replaced, are there timing concerns if this were to be deferred until the next committee meeting to give Public Works that opportunity?
Yeah, we need to, to get it in as, as soon as possible. Now that we have our, our letter, our letter was actually delayed from HUD. They said they sent it, but we didn't receive it, so I had to follow that up with the rep on Friday, and actually got a digital copy of the letter. So our clock to submit this application, or submit our Annual Action Plan is kind of ticking, and we would have 60 days from the date of the letter, which was back in April, to submit that Annual Action Plan, so it would probably be affected. I will say that because the federal budget was approved on time this year, or close to on time this year, we will be moving back our, back our application period earlier than we've been doing in the last four or five years, because they've been delaying the budget every year. So to err on the side of caution, we'll actually be opening our 2021 CDBG application process probably in August.
That, that's great. So knowing that there's time concerns now, I guess, I'm not even sure, are we having a May 27th committee meeting, and if we are, is that something where you feel if we were to have this at that committee meeting, and it could get on the first meeting in, does that, does that meet the timing, the 60 days from April?
Didn't have to go through the next council meeting. I'm not sure when the next council meeting is after that.
June 8th.
Yeah, that would, it'd be cutting it pretty close.
Okay, then, if it's cutting it too, if it's cutting it too close, I guess, I wanted to do one of two things. I wanted to either defer this to the next committee meeting, which would be in two weeks, and then have it go to the following council meeting. If, if that's cutting it too close and presenting a risk, the last thing I want is, is, is to risk losing out on this important funding. The other option I think we could discuss is if we have Mr. Skalski and Mr. Boyd look at this and bring forward what else could be, could be accomplished and, and really made more safe for residents, and have that information come to the council meeting on the 27th. It's up to the mayor if, if, if that would work for her, or I'm open to any ideas. It's just for the mayor's point that I didn't think of, as well as the fact this is a, this is a true and urgent safety issue. I want to make sure that we are, we are making sure to, to, to solve this for, for our residents.
And Charles, what do you guys use block groups to identify the locations?
Yeah, our block groups have been shifting pretty quickly, and HUD has sort of increased the, the weight of what they want you to do to justify those low to moderate income block groups. We looked at that, but a lot of the lines that were higher priority didn't fit into those block groups, so the ones we've been doing in the last few years, I've been able to attribute the beneficiaries to the Housing Authority, which is where this Grove Way Phase Two line would be attributed to. We did the line that ran by the Drake House last year, and so that's how I've been getting the beneficiaries. But going forward, unless it's near the Housing Authority or a low-income area, or defined low-income neighborhood, where I have access to the resident's income, we would have to go to block group areas. And last time we looked at that, there wasn't a, a lot of high priority projects, but I don't know if those priorities have changed since that time.
So what, after we, so if the council adopts this, these items, does it then go to the, into the consolidated plan? Does that still have to be adopted?
Our consolidated plan has been adopted, so we don't have to do anything with the con plan.
Okay.
We did, we adopted that in 2018, so it runs 18 to 2022.
Okay.
So what I, what I'd like to, what I'd like to do is, is just see that either, either Mr. Skalski and Mr. Boyd, in looking at where the eligible areas are, they come back and say, yes, these are some that we could get replaced with this, or they come back and say, nope, in every, every eligible area, there's, there's no low-income area that has these unhealthy pipes. So I, I'd love for that to come back when we vote on this. And again, although ideal for me was committee on the 27th and the following council meeting, if that timing doesn't work out, then certainly, certainly I think this discussion could be had at a, at a council meeting.
Just speaking for me and Chris, I think we can work with Charles to at least try to answer that question for you by the next meeting that this is coming forward at.
Sure. No problem here.
Unless there's other comments, I'd move to move this forward.
Can I ask a quick question? Charles, Zion Baptist Church, they were disqualified based upon it not being an eligible project?
Yep. They, they were going to provide emergency assistance to members of the Grove Way community, but they delineated, they changed the amounts of assistance based on membership status to the church, so that wasn't allowable. They were going to give non-members a certain amount, up to a certain amount, and members could get more, and that wasn't allowable.
Okay, and then CDA, they didn't, didn't fund it anything. Do we normally try to fund all the projects completely before we partially fund them and split up the funding to give somebody everything?
Well, we did, the revised, let me see if I can pull it up here, the revised allocations ended up, that extra, or the additional funds that we got ended up going to the CDA, so they ended up getting $50,000 of their $100,000 request to redo their parking lot. And then I talked to, and had the CDA today, and she said they would be willing to accept partial funding. We have, in the past, gone to try to give everybody a little bit, so to speak, but then we ran into issues where they couldn't complete the projects, or, you know, they received partial funding, ended up not being able to do what they said they were going to do. And every time we give somebody a dollar, it opens up a, you know, another huge list of requirements on HUD's standpoint, so we tried to fully, we changed that strategy a little bit, and tried to go system and then fully fund them based on making.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyser, did you make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to second his motion if it includes Mr. Skalski and Mr. Boyd having that information at the council meeting with Charles. Is that, did your moving it forward include that, Mr. Tyser?
That's fine.
Okay, so in that case.
Move forward, move forward with conditions. Is there a second? Councilmember Flair, be seconded. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to finance. Item number five, Presentation of Fiscal Year 2023 Third Quarter Budget Report. Mr. Lockit.
Hello, everybody. So we have our third quarter budget report to share with you. I'm going to go through this fairly quickly because I have a, a little bit more recent information. This is already a couple, two months old, because it's going back through, through March. But I wanted to share some information with you. So the first section here is just an overall memo that's updating you on our financials through March, but we'll get into more specific information here on each fund. This page gives you an update on our general fund. You can see our revenues, our actual revenues are, are greater than our projections through March. Our expenditures are within our, are within our projected amounts. This next page kind of gives you a little bit more particular information about each of our revenue sources. So you can see here, through March, we were doing well, about $3.3 million above our projections for FY '20, most of that coming from our property taxes. That was directly a result of our property taxes coming in a little higher than we expected, but also a big part of that was our title of the warm taxes, which came in quite a bit higher than what we expected this fiscal year. You can see that our sales and use tax was about $220,000 higher than our projections. This was the first month that we saw a decline. Throughout most of this fiscal year, we were seeing a trend of about 3% to 4% higher month or, a year over year, but for the month of March, we were down about 7% over the prior year. So this was the first month that we saw that decline. So overall, our revenues through March were $3.3 million above our projections in the general fund. On the expenditure side, we had about $3.9 million in savings going through March, and most of that was in salaries and benefits. And the bottom table there gives you an idea of how that stacks up across our various Moving into some of our other funds, these funds are all doing fairly well. Water and Sewer Fund, our, our revenues are right in line with projections, our expenditures, our rights are below our projected amounts, so we're doing well there. Our Solid Waste Fund, again, our expenditures are within budgeted amounts, and our revenues were just above our projections through March. Stormwater is the same story. Our revenues were a little bit below our projected amounts, just about $100,000, but our expenditure budget was about $600,000 below our projected amount. Recreation Participation Fund, this was really the first month that we're starting to see some impact from what was going on, so you can see that our revenue projections through March were about $3.8 million. Our actual revenue received was about 3.3. Our expenditures in this fund through March were at 4.1, and we were projecting about 4.2 million for the Recreation Participation Fund. Here, our Hotel Motel Fund next is, was already sort of on a downward track, but with everything going on because of the coronavirus, that had an even greater, speedier negative impact on this fund. So you can see here, through March, we were below, nearly $200,000 below our projections through that point. As you know, we have stopped our payments out of this fund right now, and we'll be reassessing that as we finish up the fiscal year and be bringing that update to you all to, to decide how to handle that as we close out fiscal year 2020. Our E911 Fund is doing well. Our revenues were just above our projections, and our expenditures were just below our, our projected amounts through March. And then finally, this last page kind of gives you an overall picture of all of our various funds. The next section of our report gives you an update on our capital projects, and I won't go through this individually, but it basically, just everything that is currently approved and funded by department is listed here, and this encompasses all funds, whether it's general fund-funded, impact fees, water and sewer, solid waste, all of that's listed here together. And that far right column gives you an idea of how much funds are unspent as of March Finally, this is the last bit of information I want to share. This is kind of a, an overall update on our financials. This takes us through the month of April, actually. This is similar to what we talked about a little over a month ago. Basically, our staff has gone back and reviewed our financials and done a reestimation of our expenditures and our revenues. I can tell you that, so the biggest variable here is our sales tax revenues. We received our sales tax revenue at the end of April, and it came in about 19% lower from the prior year. That was a little better than what we'd expected, but at the same time, we know that that month really was only a couple of weeks of full impact from the coronavirus, so we are expecting to see the sales tax payment that we received in May is probably going to So we are expecting to see the sales tax payment that we received in May is probably going to be about double that. So we're anticipating about fifty percent for the month of May. And so what you can see in this table I've given you, I would pay most attention to this column here. This is, we've added, from the last time that we talked, we added a new projection, and we feel most confident in this projection. But basically, we've relooked at our revenues based on what we saw in the month of April. And based on that, we're anticipating our total general fund revenues to come in about one point three million dollars less than our budgeted amount. Just to give you some perspective, a couple of months ago, we were anticipating our general fund revenues to be about two to three million dollars above our budgeted amount. So quite a swing, just in a matter of a couple of months. What's changed for the month of April, our property tax projection has decreased a little bit, even though we're still positive there. And mainly, that's seeing the impact on the purchase of vehicles and the title of warm tax that we collect. And the other big change here is that for our sales tax revenue, we've adjusted our projections to basically assume a fifty percent decline for the month of May. And this is for the months of activity. So the activity in May, I'm sorry, April and May, and then a twenty-five percent decline in June. So that's kind of what we're anticipating with sales tax. If that were to take place, we're looking at about a ten percent drop below budget or two point seven million dollars. The other big thing to point out here is our fines and forfeitures. That's quite a big drop, almost fifty percent drop from our budgeted amount, mainly due to the fact that our court has been closed. The volume of tickets has decreased with everything that's going on. Our interest revenues came in quite a bit higher than what we expected, so that's helped offset some of this. You can see we're anticipating to be about seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars above our budgeted amount for the year. As we talked about last time, we are still not anticipating any kind of transfer in from our Hotel Motel Fund. That's kind of us just being a little cautious there. So with that approach, like I said, about one point three million dollars below budget or one point eight percent. On the expenditure side, this has not changed since the last time we reviewed this information with you all. We were anticipating at the time about two point two million dollars in expenditure savings. I expect this to actually be a little higher now because of some of the actions that have taken place with the hiring freeze, as well as the decrease in part-time employees that has been reduced by about seventy-eight percent of the last several pay periods. So we'll be seeing some additional savings there, as well as just gasoline costs, electricity, water usage. All that's going to be impacted by what's been going on over the last couple of months. So with this projection, that would leave us with an ending fund balance of twenty-three million with our reserve policy of seventeen point nine, and this is for FY twenty. Don't want to get everybody confused, and we were just talking about FY twenty-one. Our ending fund balance over our reserve would be just over five million dollars. Of that amount, we are proposing to you some of that to help fund our general fund proposed budget for FY twenty-one. You can see that amount here, about two point two million. As we discussed yesterday and today, about half a million dollars was to go to help balance the operating budget, and the remainder of that was to fund those capital items that were considered pressing and time-sensitive. So with that, in this scenario, that would leave us about two point eight million dollars in general fund fund balance above our reserve policy. So that's a brief update over kind of what we know at this point, and we'll continue to pay attention to what's going on and give you all updates as we move forward. And I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone asks.
Thanks. The floor is open.
Thank you, Ryan.
There's no questions, we'll move on to transportation. Item number six, consideration for the mayor and/or city administrator to authorize execution of a construction contract with Acceler Construction LLC for a mini roundabout at the intersection of North Coleman Road and Lake Crest Drive, the amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred dollars. For Rob, Mr. Ray Ross.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share a screen here. Just give me one second. Hopefully, everyone can see that. Good. Three items all tied together to start our agenda tonight. The first item is the contract award for the mini at North Coleman. Those of you who have remembered the history through this, two thousand, there's a lot of information on this slide. Two thousand and eighteen, you approved the design contract at ninety thousand dollars. We started designing it. This is a good tool in our toolbox to prevent speeding. I'll get into some graphs here in a second. But the primary problem that we're dealing with here on North Coleman for many years is the average vehicular speed being way above what it should be. You'll see graphs about that in a second. We are very excited about this, proposing it as an innovative pilot. There are no other mini roundabouts in this city. There are very few in our metro area that are similar to what we're proposing here. We are very excited about its potential at this location, and we are also very excited about the benefits that we're going to see here being useful for other locations around the city. Third, as you see, design was approved in two thousand and eighteen. We presented the concept at committee several times. The right-of-way agreement was approved last November, authorized at forty-three, and we spent thirty-five of it. There is a PTB crossing associated with this project that you'll see in the next graphic, and that is actually the third item that we'll be going through tonight. Next slide is the bid tabs that you have in your packets, showing that we received four bids. We're recommending the lowest responsible bidder of Accelery at three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred. Next slide you see is a graphic of the finished product. You'll see a sixty-foot diameter mini roundabout with a mountable center island. Mountable means that we've designed this and the elevation on that center island so that large vehicles, primarily fire, school buses, moving trucks, vehicles like that, will actually either navigate the circle depending on their turning radius or be able to take that center island and mount it as you would the truck apron at a traditional roundabout. Other features in this graphic you'll notice, just to the right of the circle, I hope you can see my cursor on my screen, running north-south in this picture. That's the PTB crossing. We have designed this so that PTBs coming from Land O' Lakes will be able to travel east on Lake Crest, cross over North Coleman, and access Thompson Place as a way to get to Canton Street. You'll be seeing a graphic explaining how amazing that connection is going to be here in a second. Next slide, if you remember, we actually held a public information in the open house for this project and for the signal at North Coleman and Woodstock back in late two thousand and eighteen. The meeting was publicly announced through all our traditional media, city website, social media, through neighborhood contracts. We tried to reach out to the Land O' Lakes community. We actually sent a project description and meditification letters to all homes within a thousand due to the project, and we provided the boards that you see on the screen and were on hand to answer questions. The results of that meeting, you've seen this information previously, approximately sixty percent support, approximately forty percent against. A quick summary from our position is that many of the people who voted no from that meeting did not actually live at Land O' Lakes. They saw this, they saw this project as an encumbrance on their typical commute. They either lived probably on Pine Grove or probably on Woodstock and used North Coleman as a way to get from one end of the city to the other, so they saw this as a hindrance. Those who supported the project, here's quick information on why they supported the project. You'll notice that speed reduction and traffic calming, along with safety, were at the top of the list. Here are the graphs I spoke about previously, and I'll try to interpret this for you in a couple of seconds here. This was two thousand and seventeen speeds study, and you'll notice the speed limit at thirty miles an hour. Key facts you can pull from this graph, we actually have sixty-six percent of vehicles going over five miles an hour over the speed limit. We actually have, in the southbound direction, we have a little under a hundred cars a day that are going over fifty-five on the thirty mile an hour road. If those of you are familiar with North Coleman, especially in this intersection, you'll know that it's very straight. It's, there is a downhill slant to it. It is very easy to speed if you're not watching your speedometer, and we are very anxious to construct this as a way to take that top end off of this graph and prevent people from driving that fast. The previous graph was two thousand and seventeen, the next graph is two thousand and nineteen. Again, similar information, just shy of sixty percent of the drivers were exceeding five miles an hour over the speed limit on North Coleman. Last slide here is a summary of our recommendation. The lowest bid received was three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred dollars. Staff coordinated this project with Fulton County, and Fulton County requested to include waterline improvements and upgrades in the area, along with our construction documents, in order to achieve best cost bids for both, actually, both of our projects. So the breakdown ends up being that Roswell will sign a contract for three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred dollars. Fulton County will be responsible for a hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars of that contract. That will be reimbursed back to the city once the project is complete, and Roswell's share will end up being approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We will be taking that from the existing pedestrian safety and speed management fund to construct the project. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Floor is open. Rob, can you share your screen, please? Thank you.
I have a question.
Floor is open. Go ahead, Councilor Hall.
Rob, can you address school buses and how they'll be able to navigate this circle?
Sure. Best way for me to do this is actually sharing my screen again. I need to go back to the graphic of the project here. Give me one second. So what we're looking at here, if you're familiar with a typical roundabout, you'll know that there's a landscape area in the center, and then there's that reddish area kind of around the perimeter of the circle that we call a truck apron. The mini roundabout's circle functions as a truck apron. So buses are able to mount that center island and make a left. Fire trucks, we coordinated very closely with Charlie Vaca and Chief of Fire Department to make sure that they were comfortable with all the radiuses and all the heights of the islands and everything we've proposed here. So the answer to that is, yes, we have accommodated every heavy vehicle that could be using this intersection. They'll either travel around the circle just as a car would, or the back end of it will, if they're making that left, travel over that mountable island, and they'll be able to do it slowly with no issue.
So the center part of that island is stamped brick, or what is that?
So the center part of the island is similar to what, if you're familiar with the roundabout at Crenshaw Bridge, the roundabout at House Henry, there's that reddish area kind of around the center of the circle. Our circle here at the mini roundabout is nothing but that texture, basically, that textured truck apron. It is a circle, basically, that acts as a truck apron.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Del Ross? Is there a motion?
Motion to move forward.
Motion to move forward by Councilmember Willsey. Is there a second? Stand by, Councilmember Tyzer. Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Item number seven, consideration for the mayor and/or city administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement between Fulton County and the city of Roswell for the mini roundabout at the intersection of North Coleman Road and Lake Crest Drive. It includes acceptance of reimbursement of funds and the associated waterline. Mr. Del Ross.
So the next item is an IGA with Fulton County on the project we just described. This is a typical contract, very similar to agreements we've done on Hardscrabble Green Loop on Sun Valley Phase One. There are upgrades and improvements that Fulton County would like to do to their water infrastructure and to use our contractor while he's on site. And ultimately, they're benefiting because they don't have to mobilize their own contractor. We're benefiting because it's only one inconvenience to the traveling public and one construction site with one construction length. It's a win-win, and we recommend an approval. Fulton County is responsible for a hundred percent of the infrastructure that they, that our contractor will be installing.
Floor is open. Free questions. Is there a motion?
Motion to move forward.
Motion to approve by Mayor Henry. Is there a second?
Second.
Standing by, Councilmember Tyzer. All favor, please raise your hands. And it's unanimous. Thank you.
We all want to save money.
The trick to this is if you hold down your spacebar, it unmutes you quicker.
Oh, that's right. You know all the tricks.
Consideration of a resolution to designate a personal transportation vehicle PTB crossing on North Coleman Road. Mr. Del Ross.
So the last item related to the mini roundabout is your action to designate this trail and this crossing for PTBs. I believe most of you are familiar with this, with the exception being Councilmember Hall. Our city is a PTB-friendly city. It is currently legal and complying with state law. Any resident is allowed to drive their golf cart slash PTB on any road in the city that is twenty-five miles an hour below. What the state law also allows is for the city to go above and beyond that and designate either trails that are eight feet and greater or crossings of roads that aren't twenty-five miles an hour in order to provide connections for the PTBs to get from key origins to key destinations. We've done this most recently on Hardscrabble Green Loop. If those of you are familiar, we had a couple of mid-block crossings on Hardscrabble Road to provide access from homes that were on one side to the trail that we had built on the other. And ultimately, they were able to use the trail to get either to the high school or to the elementary school. So this work wasn't included in our project. It was shown in our original graphics. The, it just so happens, here is the location of where the crossing will be. Here is a map of the surrounding area with the star where our mini roundabout is. You'll notice the blue lines are roads that have twenty-five mile an hour bullet speed limits. So you'll notice to the west and to the north of our star, there is a large section of blue lines that if a crossing were to installed at the star, that crossing enables every home in between Woodstock and Lake Charles to use that crossing for their golf cart to ultimately access Canton Street. So the next graphic shows you what that, what those rooftops would look like. Every home in yellow, once we build this crossing, has a twenty-five mile an hour connection, and I'll go back to the previous slide, using the crossing and using Thompson Place going east-west over Canton Street, then traveling south on Canton Street to where their likely destination is. So we're very excited about this crossing. It was requested by several residents before the design project started. Ultimately, we accommodated it. And it just so happens that there is a large cluster of registered PTB users in this very area. We're talking about the Land O' Lakes subdivision that I would assume are very excited about the possibilities of using your PTBs to access destinations on Canton Street. That is the graphic we just showed you previously. Here's a graphic we've shown most of council previously. The most current guidance we've received from you is that you were excited about PTB crossings if we're able to install them at very low cost. For example, if we were able to just install a couple of signs with a stripe, with striping on the road, we would be able to move forward with that. And a perfect example of that was the crossing that we enabled probably within the last couple of years over on the east side on Old Alabama, connecting Willow Springs and Stutterford. But at the time, you told us that you were wanting to move forward with the very low or zero cost items, or if we were unable to include them in capital projects. But at the time, you weren't wanting to advance this as a program and start talking about large-scale implementations and coordination with GDOT and start building and identifying where the next phase of building these crosswalks would be. As you can see on the map, we have a lot of twenty-five mile an hour roads in blue, but the red lines and the orange lines are where the barriers are currently. The next map shows this a little bit better. This is a map we've shown you previously. This is a map we've shown you previously. It's a little hard to see, and I'm not, I'm not able to zoom it at this point, but if you can see the white flags, the white flags are where current registered PTVs are located right now. The green dots are where we've gotten crossings enabled and the red Xs are where crossings have been requested, but we have been able, we have not been able to move forward with them primarily for a couple of different reasons. One, if it involves the state route, two, if it's a significant cost. And, and you'll see where, you'll see based on kind of the clustering, they're over there, Canton Street West to Canton Street on Woodstock, and then up on the north side, north of Hardscrabble towards Cox. That concludes my presentation, just hoping we can approve this trail and this connection for PTV access.
I just have a couple of comments. This is going back to our discussion that we had in promoting our, our city where we can have more of these crossings. And it's clear that we're not in a budget season or anytime soon probably that we're going to be able to expend this money. I wanted to see if we could explore options of having citizen groups or subdivisions sponsor or buy a crossing. So if there was a group that wanted together, just similar to adopt the street for cleaning a street, to adopt a crossing, would it be possible for this citizen group or neighborhood or organization to pay the fees for the striping or whatever small modifications or whatever cost is involved and then the city maintain it going forward? Is that something that we could consider?
So, Councilmember Hall, that's something that we've talked about previously related to some other items with our finance department and my understanding with Rine, specifically we've talked about either, either crosswalks or sidewalk gaps or things like that. My understanding with, or even RFV crossings with businesses that we've done once before. My understanding with the finance department is that, is that, that is already currently enabled. So there wouldn't be any kind of code requirements for us to receive those funds and entering into that partnership. For staff to take a look at the entire city and do another look over where those crossings right would, could occur, that would take a couple of months of work and we'd be happy to bring that back to a committee item, committee discussion later this summer.
Floor is open.
So, except, so I think that was a great, great point by Councilmember Hall. So first off, I love this opportunity, this initiative, this is something I support. That, that being, that being said, I, from the way I was hearing it, it's, it's always helpful for staff to look in and see where the possibilities exist. But it sounds to me like actually residents are being proactive with it. Residents are already requesting here, requesting elsewhere. So I guess, I guess related to Councilmember Hall's point, and I thought it was a great point, you said it was very limited costs and you said it's really just, let's, let's use this exact example. So it's just the stripings of a crosswalk and the sign saying PTV. What's your prediction on that total cost? Are we talking $1,000? Are we talking less, more?
The total cost of the project, the city's share for the total cost of the project was that $240,000. I would, I would estimate the, the cost of the PTV, if we weren't, if we were designing this project and didn't have a PTV crossing, for example, enabled, we're talking less than 5%. We're talking, to enable this crossing, we're talking about an increase in width of what would normally be a sidewalk and we build a trail, because in order to have PTV, you would need to upgrade from five to eight. And then we would be tinkering with some radiuses of the curves. We would normally do a crosswalk there anyway. It would be in probably a little bit different location if we were doing primarily pedestrian instead of the PTVs. It is a very low cost related to the $240,000. I would say 1% to 2% of the total cost.
And, and what is the, what is, I guess I just got kind of confused. So with this, let's say the sidewalk already existed and it was just a matter of crosswalk and two signs. I would, I would have pictured that would be even less than 1%.
It very well could be.
I, I think Councilmember Palermo is asking if somebody wanted to do one in another area, if it's just striping and signs, are they looking at $1,000 or $2,000 or $500?
So when we bring this, and Mohammed's gonna probably follow up on this conversation in a second, what, when we brought this list to council, that map that we showed across the city, entire city approximately a year and a half ago, we had a very wide range of costs for these crossings. The Willow Springs to Stutterford, example, was a simple couple of signs with some striping. There were, there were very valid, very important crossings that residents have proposed that would be significant cost. We're talking about trails that don't currently exist. We're talking about coordination with the state DOT, even see whether they would be able to, to consider this at all. There was a wide range of, of very cheap to very expensive, based on those red Xs that you saw across the city, there was probably 20 or 30 of them.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I, I would just add, Councilmember Hall, a little bit to what Rob has already said. So a couple of years ago, when we brought in all the requests that came in after the city passed the ordinance, most of them did cost some money. You know, some were large amounts, some were smaller amounts, but the guidance at the time was to do what would cost almost nothing. So we were only able to do like two or three crossings where we just needed like a couple of signs and maybe a crosswalk painted. That's all in-house work. So with staff time, we were able to do that. But rest of everything, majority of the requests were gonna cost some money, a few grands to, you know, tens of thousands, maybe 10, 20, $30,000. So we didn't do anything on those. So I think it's a great suggestion to have some kind of, adapt a crosswalk, adapt a PTV crossing, you know, campaign, an option for the residents and wherever the cost is reasonable, I feel that some residents may want to take that opportunity.
Floor is open. Free.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. I just, if you could just refresh my memory, our memory on what the parameters are for the vehicles to be used on a street. Isn't it, it's a speed limit of 25 miles per hour and sidewalks existing?
So I don't believe there's any kind of requirement for sidewalks. PTVs are allowed to drive in the road, share the road with vehicles, provided that the speed limit of the road is 25 miles an hour or below.
Okay, alright.
PTVs are not allowed to use five-foot sidewalks.
Right, okay. Alright, great. I just wanted to make sure that we discussed that so that we knew the areas that we could talk about. I can think of several areas where it might be good to use them, but I think the speed limit is higher than that. Great, thank you. Motion to move forward.
Motion to move forward by Councilmember Willsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Say by Councilmember Hall. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And, you guys, thank you. Item number nine, consideration for the mayor and our city administrator to authorize the director of transportation to sign a permit for a new traffic signal on State Route 140, Holcomb Bridge Road. Mr. Del Ross.
Thank you, Gary. Final item for tonight is a little bit of a strange one, so bear with me. I'm gonna try and describe this the best I can. There is a new signal coming soon on Holcomb Bridge that not many of you are aware of. Many years ago, back in 2013, 2014, the Kroger Plaza between Nesbit Ferry and Barnwell on Holcomb Bridge, I'll be showing you a map in a second. The Kroger Plaza went to Johns Creek and asked for permission to install gas pumps at Kroger. They went to Johns Creek because Kroger is located in Johns Creek. And, and associated with those gas pumps was a traffic study that said the Kroger driveway needed to be signalized in order for vehicles to use these gas pumps. So that process went through between Kroger and Johns Creek. The traffic study recommended a traffic signal. Johns Creek concurred with the traffic study and Johns Creek at that point approved the gas pumps and started discussions with the state DOT, whether the state DOT was gonna permit the signal and what those design elements would look like. The intersection we're talking about on that graphic, for those of you familiar, this section of the city has very strange city limits, so I hope the graphic explains it. Holcomb Bridge throughout the section that we're looking at here is actually located within the city of Roswell. The right-of-way line on the north side is the city limit, so Kroger is located in Johns Creek. Barnwell Road is located in Johns Creek. Nesbit Ferry is ours and of course, the state DOT operates the right-of-way of State Route 140, Holcomb Bridge Road. So the signal we're talking about is the Kroger entrance. You see the blue circle graphic primarily feeding the users of that plaza. Just a quick note, it will actually be a four-legged intersection, a four-legged signal. For those of you who are familiar, there is a small portion of current city of Roswell residential to the south of this intersection on a private street that is named South Holcomb Bridge Way. More background, Kroger, as I said, Kroger and Johns Creek concurred that a traffic signal needed to be, needed to be installed at this location. When Johns Creek went to the state DOT, the state DOT's condition for approving the signal was that Johns Creek enter into improvements at Barnwell Road and 140 to offset the, the degradation of the mobility and the throughput by installing the new signal at Kroger would be offset by improvements at Barnwell. So at that point, Johns Creek has started a intersection improvement at Barnwell that was ultimately put on their T-SLOSS list and moved forward. They are close to actually letting that project, they're wrapping up right-of-way right now and I'm understanding that the construction on that intersection will likely start before the end of the year. We were notified after all those conversations occurred that GDOT was favorable to a signal at this location. It did meet warrants and their condition was improvements at Barnwell. Couple of more facts for you. As far as the operations of this signal and how the timing would work, this signal would be no different than any other signalized intersection we have on 140. The ultimate maintenance responsibility and the, and the owner of the signal and whose system it comes on ultimately is whatever city the, the intersection is located in. So it's a little bit strange that, that Johns Creek kind of initiated this process, but ultimately the signal will become ours and it will be maintained and operated under a relationship between our staff and the regional traffic operations program that GDOT maintains and staffs, no different than any other signal on Holcomb Bridge. The only other element we wanted to draw your attention to is that ultimately, since the signal is located in our city, we are required to submit a permit, the final approval, and we will be required to pay the monthly maintenance and energy costs of this new signal in this location because it's in the city limits and we've estimated that cost it approximately $49 a month. That was a lot of information. Ultimately, we recommend approval here and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Floor is open.
Hi, Rob. Thank you very much. This is, I, good news, it's, it's an intersection that I am very familiar with. It's the left turn into the Chick-fil-A. So not just a Kroger there, but just questions about, that's going to put a lot of traffic lights in that section of Holcomb Bridge. Are there concerns about just, I mean, what are the guidelines for the spacing and how they do slow down mobility? I can definitely see from a safety standpoint that it's much needed.
So Mohammed will follow up on this, but Councilmember Willsey, you're exactly correct. When we first heard about this, we had the exact same concerns. There are minimum standards and minimum lengths that both the city and GDOT would typically look at and be very concerned if two signals are in close proximity, they actually start degrading the effect of each other. This is, if you're familiar with, the offset from this to Barnwell would be very similar to the offset that we have at the Studio Movie Grill further west of this. There, so there is a precedent that distances very similar. From our perspective, we were, we were not thrilled with the idea of the new signal being there, but given the improvements that Johns Creek is also doing at Barnwell, we see the combination of the two projects as the, as a, as a neutral benefit, as, as a net zero.
Okay. I mean, there'll be five, like within less than a quarter mile there. Stoplights, so.
Yes, I mean, Councilmember Willsey, it is less than ideal spacing and GDOT knows it. It doesn't meet their standards. Same thing happened for the Studio Movie Grill, the new signal that went in. But you know, these, the shopping center owners, you know, they reach out to GDOT and they, you know, they got the approval basically for the Studio Movie Grill and now this one. So it becomes, well, Kroger is paying for it, GDOT is constructing it. All we'll have to do is maintain it for life, basically, and the cost to the city for that maintenance for life is really $49 a month, which is not a big deal. And of course, you know, it's, it's inside Roswell. I'm sure a lot of Roswell residents, they go to that Kroger and the Chick-fil-A and everything, and even on the other side, those properties are within the, within the city of Roswell. So it's a benefit to the area residents and area businesses. For the commuters through the area, you know, one more traffic signal, yes, it is a disruption to the, to the traffic on Holcomb Bridge, but the modification they're gonna do at the Barnwell traffic signal as part of it, that's gonna be huge and that is gonna improve some. Overall, maybe it'll be a, it'll just be a balance, it'll be a wash.
I can see pluses and minuses, so.
Yes.
We'll see. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation and the discussion. So I guess what I'm curious, so what I'm hearing is from a cost standpoint, you're picturing about $600 a year, cause about $50 a month. And that's, that's basically it. And then Roswell gets to control the timing of the light right there at the Kroger, is that right?
Yes, with the help of the regional traffic operations program, which is paid for by GDOT. So generally, they look for the throughput on the main street, but of course, our staff is very involved in that process. City has actually assigned MOU on that, that we signed many years ago when the program started, I guess, the mid-2000s maybe. So yes, we have a say in the timing, how we control that. So we'll definitely, you know, keep in mind the flow of traffic on the main street and the side street access.
Gotcha. And thank you, yeah, cause I do want to make sure that the timing of the light is being set up for whatever's best for Roswell residents, not just what's, what's best for, for the Kroger there and how Johns Creek has, has set things up. And then basically, you're thinking, are you, are you thinking it's a wash for Roswell residents? I think I heard you say based on the Barnwell improvements as well as the downside of that many, I have the, the map right here, as well as that many lights right there. And then, and then from a, people that are commuting through Roswell, again, I want to make sure we're focused on people in Roswell, is it, are those, are those the individuals that are, that are more negatively impacted by that light there or were they negatively impacted the same way that Roswell residents are? And again, my focus is 100% on Roswell residents, I just want to understand all the impacts.
So adding another traffic light on the corridor for the Holcomb Bridge traffic, you know, of course, it's just one more place where they may have to stop. So when I say it's, it's a wash, I'm saying with the improvements at Barnwell that the Johns Creek is paying for and this new traffic signal that Kroger is paying for, for the commuter traffic on Holcomb Bridge, it may be a wash, you know, but for, generally for the Roswell residents, I think having another safer access to access point to Kroger and Chick-fil-A and the shopping centers on the other side, there is a Goodwill there and there's Starbucks there, and then again, there is more shopping area and some residential area in Roswell as well. So they get, get another opportunity for safe and easy access into all those areas. So it is a good.
So is that, that was actually a question I had, so, so I love the DePaulo there. Is that shopping plaza with DePaulo, is that benefiting from this or no?
Rob, is that where that Goodwill and Starbucks is, that DePaulo?
So the way, yeah, the way I would answer that is, is I think there are multiple ways into that shopping center, but yes, you could absolutely say that this signal would help operations there. That is not, not the only way into that, that shopping center. It, it certainly is not a negative. Most, most commercial properties that we speak with are very excited when we talk about adding traffic signals. Thank you.
And I think just to, just to state the obvious, Roswell residents benefit from the left turn signal that they don't currently have. Residents coming from the other direction already make a right turn.
There's definitely a safety benefit. I just want to point out one thing that I learned. I did not realize that it, that every traffic signal is $600 a year to operate.
traffic signal is $600 a year to operate. So each, that's, that's the cost of any traffic signal, is that correct?
So I would have to explain that a little since this is a state road. The G dot owns the right-of-way and of course, they are the owner of this future traffic signal. It's just that we do the maintenance, meaning we would pay the power bill, the monthly power bill for it. And maybe if there is a bomb out or if there is a press in signal that's just malfunctioning, we'll use our crews to go and fix it. But if there is any major expense on that traffic signal, on any traffic signal on the, on any of the state roads, then all major costs, you know, they come from, from the state T O T. But that's not the case for all the traffic signals on local roads, which we own and we pay for the power bill, we pay for any maintenance, any upgrades. So there's difference between the signals on state roads, G dot is the owner, we only do the, the minimal maintenance, the day-to-day maintenance of those signals.
So the state road signals basically cost us $600 a year?
Yes, each.
I have a question. Okay, so obviously, we did not generate this project. And if the one for Kroger and Johns Creek, I doubt this would even be very high up on your radar as far as improvements to be made in Roswell. But Kroger wants it, Johns Creek wants it, is there any reason why we can't enter into an M O U with Kroger that they pay up to maintain?
If that's your direction, then we could initiate that conversation.
I think that's a conversation worth having.
Okay, if you remember, Mayor, the, a few years ago, the new traffic signal at Nesbit Ferry and Brumbelow, now that's an intersection in the city of Roswell. The city of Johns Creek wanted that traffic signal so badly that they paid for the full installation cost, like a couple hundred thousand dollars for that. But, and there was an M O U sign, so the city of Johns Creek paid for it, but we, the city of Roswell, is responsible for the future maintenance of that. So if that's the direction the city wants to go, we can definitely initiate that conversation with the city of Johns Creek and they can talk to the Kroger in their city.
So quick question, is the left, if you go eastbound, the left lane, the left turn lane, seems to be not too long. Is going to be any modification to the lane there to turn left or just the traffic light?
Yeah, so you have noticed the Holcomb Bridge has been resurfaced and that's another fact. You know, all the state roads in the city, the resurfacing responsibility sits on G dot because of course, they own the road. So as part of that resurfacing project, they are going to extend that left turn lane into the Kroger, which eventually is going to become a signalized left turn when this traffic signal goes in.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? Move to approve. Question approved before by Councilmember Tyser. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Vazapata, any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it is six to one. Thank you, thanks, Rob, nice work.
Thank you.
Hey Gary, hey Gary, can you call them out since I need to fill my minutes?
Take a break?
No, as in take the roll, we said it was six to one.
Okay, I'm sorry, the mayor voted no. Good enough?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to other items. Number 10, discussion to adjust occupation tax rates, business licenses, Councilwoman Palermo.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Palmer. So basically, this is a two-part discussion that I want to have and I do want us to, to vote to, to move forward, to really task staff with coming back with some information. So there's, there's two aspects of this. For those of you that are less familiar or really more for the public, the way, the way our, our business taxes are set up, which we set, which we set up probably back in 2016 or 2017, is based on a percentage of gross receipts. And, and basically, that percentage of gross receipts is decided by profitability segments. And so basically, what we, what we saw and what we know when you look at this is, if you look at, if you look at the high profitability segment of apartment, like for example, that contains apartment complexes, it is at a significantly lower rate than nearby cities that have gross receipts. Ultimately, that means that, that residents and other businesses are subsidizing these, these more profitable businesses, you know, like, like the, the apartment complexes. And so that's, that's one side of it. And the other side of it is the fact that in Roswell, really, I think a key part of our character is our small businesses and, and an example of that being our restaurants. I, I'd like, I'd like staff to look at seeing the possibility of reducing the lower profitability tax rates to, to just, to just really see anything we can be doing to show, to show that we really, we, we stand by our small businesses, you know, supporting things that really make up that character of, of Roswell. So basically, what I'm, what I'd love to discuss and really get into just any of the details, any pros and cons today, is ultimately, my, my goal and my hope is that from this, we can then, we can then vote for staff to come back with just some numbers on what that would look like. So for example, and does it, does it look like, Mr. Luckett is here. So, so Mr. Luckett, please, please correct any incorrect numbers that I share, but for example, the, you know, the higher profitability, I believe it's even the highest profitability segment has a tax rate of, I want to say it's point one two. And, and then, and then if we look at other one, at nearby cities, it's instead, I remember a number of them actually being, starting with a point two zero or point two something. And so basically, I just want, I, I want to request that Mr. Mr. Luckett's department comes back with just really providing the, for the four cities nearby that have gross receipts, here's what the, here's what the tax, tax rates are for that segment. And then they, and so, and then in addition, I'd like, and any recommendations that staff has based on, on this intention and this discussion. And also, what I'd like is, is Mr. Luckett also to look at the low, the low profitability segment and something that, you know, for example, including restaurants and any recommendations that staff would have on, on where possibilities for reduction can be and what that should look like. And I bring that up because when I, when I had some questions and I reached out to Mr. Luckett, once I, when I put this on the, the agenda, he brought up, you know, it could be the entire segment moving to a lower range, it could be the entire segment moving, you know, that's the high profitability moving to a higher, there's also the possibility of breaking it out. You know, for example, today, I forget, we might have six or seven different segments and perhaps staff's recommendation could be, it should be eight or nine, in fact, some of those should be, should be separated in half. So, so ultimately, today, I'm not asking for a vote on specifically what number to move something to, but I am, I am asking for consensus and, or majority support that staff does come back with, with some potential numbers, giving us the opportunity to, to vote on something.
Ryan, how long do you think we're thinking to turn something like that around?
Maybe for the next committee meeting, or the next admin finance committee?
Hey, Ryan, with, since this is, so you're saying the next admin that's coming up, not the next combat, I just want to clarify.
Right.
Okay, floor is open.
Yes, just a question clarification, if you're talking about the business license occupation tax, I mean, looking at the most recent schedule, it seems to me that apartments, if they're classified as holding companies or even real estate rental and leasing are already being taxed at point zero 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 six, whereas restaurants are being taxed at point zero zero two. So they're already being taxed at a higher rate?
Well, this is a great, great point. So with, without a doubt, the, by, and I believe it's actually by law, the highest profitability does have to be taxed at the highest rate. That being, that being said, my point is, as we, as we look at other cities, you know, obviously, we want to do purely what's best for Roswell. And I think, I think it is healthy to look at other cities, if we see something that they're doing that makes sense, we should, we should look at emulating if they're doing something we disagree with, we obviously should absolutely do the opposite. But my, my point is, if we compare what that highest, what that highest profitability group is being charged and paying in Roswell compared to what they're paying in the other cities, it's actually significantly lower in Roswell. And ultimately, the money has to come from somewhere, which, which makes me believe that Roswell residents are really subsidizing these, these, these higher profitability businesses. And again, you know, with the example for apartment complexes, there are a lot of services that, that apartment complexes, complexes use and, and just definitely want to make sure that, that, that there's a, even though they pay, pay a high tax compared to our lower profitability businesses, I feel, I feel we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be having such a, a lower rate there because again, ultimately, that's, that's impacting, that's impacting residents and frankly, other businesses within Roswell for the services we can provide and the capital projects we can take on.
I guess my concern would be that ultimately, those taxes are passed along to that business's consumer. And in this case, it would be those residents of, you know, who happen to live in the apartments. So given everything that's going on in the world right now, I'm not sure that that's the best place to be raising costs.
Sure, so I, I think that's, that's a great point, I think something that should be had in this discussion. From, from everything I've seen, I believe that what actually is going to dictate the price is, is the, is the, is the market. And because, because ultimately, as a, as a, as a consumer, you're not going to look just automatically at one specific location, but you're looking at it, at a, at a region. And ultimately, I think, I think what we've seen, we've even have some, some examples. So Roswell has some apartments, some luxury apartments that are extremely expensive. Basically, if you look at a lot of the new ones, if you look at, for example, Vickers, CityWalk, those are extremely high rents despite the fact that we have the lower, the much lower apartment taxes than in other cities. Basically, the landlords, if they're, just because they have an increased cost of actually having to pay their, their fair share with, with the tax rates that are more appropriate with, with other cities, doesn't mean that they, they will have the ability to charge above what the actual market is, is allowing. And so they're, so therefore, that's, that's something where I just, I feel confident that what's, what's occurring is ultimately residents, residents are subsidizing and that subsidy is not going to apartment renters, that subsidy is going to the landlords and, and it's shown with the extreme profitability as well.
You keep using the word subsidy, you don't understand how we're subsidizing apartments. That's just my definition. How am I subsidizing an apartment complex as a taxpayer?
Sure.
Maybe someone else can talk.
Oh, I get the question, I'm the one that's.
About the conversation to everyone. But you know, I, I don't understand how we're subsidizing to begin with. The second thing is, is we, if we look at the other cities around us, which is always a healthy thing to do, we can't cherry pick what we're going to increase, what we're going to decrease. And I'll go one step further. I have very good friends here in Roswell that have other small businesses, they're not restaurants. Are we going to include them? What's the threshold going to be? Where do we draw the line? And am I, and we're, our message to the community is that the taxpayers of Roswell are subsidizing apartments and apartments are just going to pass this along to their renters. So I, I don't, I don't understand the reasoning and I don't understand your definition of subsidizing.
Sure, so I appreciate, I appreciate the chance to discuss that. So I think I heard three, three different, three different aspects. So number one, I'm just, so why is it that I believe taxpayers are subsidizing the, the apartment complexes? It's, it's ultimately because there's a large number of services that are used in the community and somebody has to pay for them. If we look at nearby cities, apartment, apartment complexes, those high profitability businesses are paying a larger share than they are in Roswell. If they're paying a larger share, but the services are still being used, it means somebody else is paying for it. That's where I think the subsidy is. I've already mentioned that I don't think it's just passed, passed through because again, the, the market, I believe, will, will dictate, will dictate it. And then, and then separately, from a cherry picking standpoint, I actually, I feel what we need to do is we need to make sure that we have a code and a tax structure that we feel is appropriate for our community. Should we just look at just, just restaurants and give them advantage? I say absolutely not. And in fact, as Mr. Luckett will remind us all, that's, that's illegal because the way it's set up is not based on each individual type of business getting to decide, I want this business to have this tax rate, I want this one to have this tax rate. Instead, it's looking at profitability. So we, so basically, my, my point is we have the highest profitability businesses that pay such a lower tax rate than all the nearby cities, somebody else, somebody has to pick up that slack and it's either, it either means it's the lower profitability businesses or it's the residents.
So number one, it's a gross receipts tax, it's not a profitability tax. And so gross receipts times a percentage rate may or may not create a situation where someone's paying too much or too little. Let me also say that, let me give you an example, let's just say that I own four rental properties and you raise the taxes on those four rental properties. It would be a pretty dumb businessman who doesn't pass that along to his renter. I'd also say that right now, today, taxing low-income people, increasing taxes on low-income people is something that I just can't stomach. I think it's wrong, I think it's, I think it's bad and I just, I, I, I just can't believe that we're having a discussion about taxing low-income people who are skewed heavily, heavily towards Georgia's almost 28% unemployment rate at this time. It's, 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 it's just an awful time to do this. I think if you want to do this in, in a year when people are back to work, we can have this discussion. But, but I got to tell you, the thought of raising rent on families who are out of work trying to feed their children is just unacceptable at this point. I, you know, it, taxing low-income people, increasing taxes on low-income people is, is, is an awful thing. And again, I just think increasing taxes on lower-income people is a bad idea.
I, I, I agree with Councilman Tyser, is this not the time to have this conversation? As I said last night, there's a time and a place. We're in the middle of a global pandemic, we're at 30% almost unemployment in the state. We're talking about raising taxes on people in apartments to appease political goals that were said during a campaign. And now, I, I just cannot believe we're having this discussion right now about raising taxes on apartments. I mean, this, we just need to, if we're going to say this, instead of going through all these different U D C amendments, through this backdoor, just say we don't, we want to ban apartments and people that live in apartments in the city of Roswell. This is getting ridiculous, this is not the time nor place to have this conversation. We need to be talking about how to help citizens of Roswell survive during the pandemic. And I, I'm just disgusted to even be a part of this.
I'd just like to bring this back to where I think it started off as, that I understood that we are trying to equalize what our apartment owners are paying in taxes consistent to how other cities measure that and arrive at those numbers. I believe that's what I understood from the beginning of this conversation, I don't know how it got all the way over here. Maybe, Councilmember Palermo, can you restate?
Yes, to, to everybody's aware, this is not to raise taxes on residents or residents that live in apartments, this is to raise the business tax on the most profitable businesses, which include apartment buildings.
You've determined they're the most profitable by what means?
Right. By the, by the means we have to by law, which is by the IRS. The IRS gives the different industries profitability and it says that we cannot, we cannot tax a low profitability business at a higher tax rate than we tax a high profitability. High profitability has to be the highest, that's, that's law, that's from the IRS.
So in Roswell, we want to be business smart and people that might employ people less profit the high profitability businesses in a time where we want to attract business when coming out of COVID-19, it doesn't make much sense to me.
No, my goal is not to be higher than anywhere else, my goal is to get in line for just the high profitability ones and be able to, to make sure that residents are getting the services we need and that we're, we're taking care of the really what makes Roswell great. and that we're taking care of really what makes Roswell great.
So I understand that you're proposing to study this and come with with a recommendation or information for us to take a decision. It's not that we're going to tax tomorrow. We're asking for information that is worth to, I mean, I guess they were just about golf carts a few minutes ago. So in a pandemic, talking about golf cart is, you know, is not a very relevant medium. So I think that having the chance to study this and making sure that, you know, we are charging the same amount of taxes of our neighbors in terms of some industries, I think makes totally sense to equalize with the region. So I think it's worth to study this and come with the information and for us to take a look and make a decision. So I think that you went too far talking about the pandemic again and everything. I think it is worth to study. Doesn't mean we have to take a decision, but it's worth to know what we have and what our neighbors charge for the same industries.
Councilman Zapata, unfortunately, that's a bit different. This was put on by a council member. The golf cart project and the road project was put on by staff that had been going for a year and a half. And I think Mr. Luckett has better things to do when we're trying, when we're laid off 78% of our part-time employees than look at this project right now.
But actually, this project could potentially give the revenue to be able to hire back those 78% employees. Isn't this the right time to do that?
I think you're talking about a very small amount of money. No.
I don't know.
I just think it's very telling that the only thing you wanted to look at, the only business that you wanted to look at is raising taxes on apartments and raising taxes on low-income people. And I just think raising taxes on low-income people is a very, very sad thing, a very, very bad thing to do. Raising taxes on low-income people is a very bad idea.
So, okay, but it's, let's not put words in other people's mouths. What I've said is, the highest profitability businesses, like the apartment complexes, we should look at lining their tax rate up with other cities. And I want to look at, for the lower profitability businesses in Roswell that are surviving on, you know, a thread right now, can we look at reducing their tax rate? And to Councilman Zapata's great, neither of which did I say I want to move forward tonight. I think we need more data and more information. We shouldn't be afraid to have Mr. Luckett come back with just showing, here's what it would look like if we taxed the high profitability businesses like the other cities nearby. And here's the opportunity we have to lower the taxes on lower profitability businesses, which I use restaurants as an example, but again, there's many different small businesses that are low profitability according to the IRS.
Since you posted this on Facebook the other day, I've had multiple people come up to me, and nobody's thought it's a good idea. I think it's the wrong time or place. I'm not for this at this point in time. I think we need to move on to more important things.
So I don't base my comments or decisions on Facebook. You know, I think it makes sense. We don't even know how much revenue we'll bring or no brain. We don't know. We just don't know. We're ignorant. No. But why don't we take, you know, some time to go through the the schedule of different industries and see what the cities around us, a couple of phone calls. It's not a rocket science to build a rocket to go to Mars. So I think it's worth to see. We're leaving money on the table that we much need now, especially right now, after we went through the presentation today, and see how many projects are left behind. Because we don't have the money this budget season. So I think that we remain ignorant to see how much money we bring just to get as equal to our neighbors in terms of the tax rate for different industries. I think that it's worth it, and it seems like it doesn't take 20 million hours to do it. So I don't want to remain ignorant. I would like to know if we have a chance to generate another revenue that much needed for the city, so we don't keep putting pressure on us, single-family homeowners in Roswell.
Yeah, just a quick question for Ryan. Do you, Ryan, do you have a breakdown of what our receipts are by any ICS code?
I do. I compiled some information, just some basic information, just in case some questions came up, and I can share that with you all.
I'm confused. Well, I was confused. I think I'm still confused. The information I was providing, and you all know I am not on Facebook, but I heard reports that Councilmember Palermo wanted to reduce the tax for restaurants and raise the tax on apartments. I don't know if that's the case. I have not been, please don't interrupt me. I have not been on Facebook. However, the description in our agenda today uses two different categories, apartments and restaurants. It says considerations such as apartments, businesses such as restaurants. So that keeps aligning that to me in my mind. Now, the other thing that concerns me is you're throwing in subsidizing, that we are subsidizing apartments. That characterization concerns me. I would suggest, I don't have any problem doing homework and looking at other cities to see what their tax structure is compared to ours. But when you frame the initiative in these terms, I'll tell you right now, I can't support it. If we are looking at our tax structure compared to other cities, I am all in favor of having Ryan look at that, and I want him to be very cautious on when he would promise that. He's right in the middle of an annual budget. He's got a quarterly budget coming up. We've got just him looking at our financial situation and the economy on a daily basis is enough stress to put an elephant down. So thank you, Ryan. But I have absolutely no problem looking at it. But like Chris said, when you start throwing around inflammatory words like subsidizing, you only picked out apartments and restaurants. I just can't, I can't support that narrative.
And so with that, I'd like to make a motion that will not include subsidizing. And also, I was concerned using NAIC codes or whatever they're called would be confusing to most. So again, I used high profitability and low profitability and used an example. But nonetheless, what I would like to, what I would like to motion for, and I heard, I know, it sounded like there's some, there's definitely some opposition, but I think it's important we look at this. And so I motioned that at the committee meeting, at the June Admin Finance Committee meeting, staff comes back and shows us nearby cities that use gross receipts and shows us what the tax rates are for their high profitability segment. And also, staff comes back with any recommend, based off of that, any recommendations or options on how we can reduce a tax rate for the lower profitability segment, which includes which includes businesses like restaurants, but many others. And if that's clear to Mr. Luckett, I can certainly remove the word restaurants and specifying that in the in the motion. But I just want to make sure it's completely clear to Mr. Luckett what's being requested.
I just have a comment. We just implemented this occupation tax within the last two years. So I have to believe we did a lot of research, you know, within the last two years on what other cities are doing, and that that's what this is based on. Is that correct?
When the council adopted the gross receipts tax method, that was when previous finance director was here, and he did a lot of better research and, you know, provided some comparisons to other cities. And, you know, the only thing I would say that has changed since then has been that, you know, the point of all this is that with a structure and a base on profitability is that we try and update the profitability as often as the IRS provides the data for us to be able to do that. And so as we've updated the profitability, that has shifted the tax, the the spread of tax rate. And so when the tax, when the tax structure was initially adopted, it was fairly evenly spread across the various profitability ratios and ranges. That has shifted some with the updated profitability. So I'd say that's the only big change that's happened since this was initially adopted. But at the time, the mayor and council with that initially adopted this, opted to go for a more simplified tax structure. And we have seven different tax classes, whereas some of our surrounding cities have 12, up to 24 different tax classes. So there's a wide range of possibilities, but those are just to give you some background.
So we have a motion on the floor to have staff come back at the June Administration Committee meeting showing nearby cities, and I will clarify, is Norfolk cities, is that good enough?
So I'd say, Atlanta was one of them that Mr. Lee provided as well, so I think nearby is fine, but I want to make sure to narrow the focus of staff. It's purely on ones that have gross receipts. This is not looking to completely redesign and look at all the different tax methods out there, but purely comparing to nearby cities that use gross receipts as their method.
And a quick clarification, you would like to see the upper range and the lower range in terms of tax, those two, like the top and the bottom? Or you want to take a look to everything in between?
I'm flexible with staff's preference on that.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Any further questions or discussion?
I first want to ask Ryan. Ryan, are you comfortable with this timeline, with everything you've got on your shoulders right now?
Yeah, I think a month is enough time to kind of go through this and do the analysis, that's the end.
I'm going to call the roll. If you just want to answer with your vote, Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Judy?
Not the time.
Is that a no?
No.
Councilmember Palermo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tizer? Councilmember Zapata?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
No. I would encourage us to look for other ways to help small businesses and to encourage businesses during the recovery, but I don't think this is a priority at this time.
Okay, the motion carries for three. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda, I think we need to take a break while we switch things out, so you guys just hold fast for a few seconds, and we'll bring you back in.
Thank you, Gary.